Miller?
Here.
DeBoer?
Here.
Cruz?
Here.
Lanford?
Here.
Dara?
Here.
Whelan?
Here.
Green?
Here.
All members present, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Item C is a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting June 18th.
So moved.
Second. Motion second. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. At this time, I'd like to take a couple of minutes for a proclamation for the Big Brothers, Big Sisters Day. It reads in part, "Whereas Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Northeast Iowa is celebrating its 55th anniversary of serving youth in the Cedar Valley, it is appropriate at this time to commend the Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Northeast Iowa on a positive impact it has made in our community. Whereas Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Northeast Iowa, through the support of the City of Cedar Falls and surrounding areas, with the assistance from friends and numerous volunteers, has vitally enhanced the community by fulfilling its mission over the past 55 years to provide over 30,000 children facing adversity with strong and enduring professionally-supported one-to-one relationships that change their lives for the better forever. Whereas the programs provided are proven to have a direct and measurable impact on children's lives and to be effective in combating school violence and school discipline problems, substance abuse, incarceration, and truancy; and whereas the City of Cedar Falls appreciates the contributions of all of those who have served and continue to serve as staff, volunteers, donors, and Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Northeast Iowa for bringing your certified mentoring programs to the City of Cedar Falls for all to benefit." Now therefore, I, Jim Brown, Mayor of the City of Cedar Falls, Iowa, do hereby declare July 12th, 2018 as Big Brothers, Big Sisters Day, signed this ninth day of July, 2018. Now I think I have Katie, their fearless leader, and some of the bigs and littles here to say a couple of words. Welcome.
Thanks so much for welcoming us tonight. We have turned 55. We've done it, and we're just so excited that we've made this milestone. We have been living the dream, starting in Waterloo and spreading to Cedar Falls, and then Blackhot County, and then gradually to Bremer County, and then slowly taking over Northeast Iowa since 1963. We offer mentoring, one-to-one mentoring. We are the premier mentoring organization in the country, and Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Northeast Iowa is actually one of the top Big Brothers, Big Sisters agencies in the country, and we've held that designation for the past three years. We're just so proud of the work that we can do in Northeast Iowa, bringing such a quality program to Cedar Falls and the surrounding communities, and that wouldn't be possible without all the hard work of our program champions, which are all of you, whether you want to be or not, everyone that supports us, our bigs, our littles, our families, donors, board members, advisory council members, our staff. We've gone through a lot of changes over the past 55 years. We just finished our school year strong. We served 404 youth in this community and the surrounding areas. Our five-year goal is to serve 700 in one-to-one mentoring relationships. We offer a school-based program in Cedar Falls. It consists of our bigs going to the littles, that's what we call kids, littles, schools, once a week for a few hours during the school year, just to build a relationship, do homework together if the littles want, play board games, do crafts, just something to build that safe environment for the child. And then our community-based program, which is what Amanda and Barb and Olivia do, is they meet a few hours each month. They do things in the community that are low-cost and no-cost, and just promotes, again, relationship-building, and getting those littles out of the house and trying something new. In the past school year, our littles had great tremendous impact. So 97% of our bigs helped their littles cope with a challenging situation at home art school. 79% of our littles who had difficulties forming healthy relationships with parents and/or peers before meeting with their bigs have improved their relationships at home art school. 68% of our littles who struggled with social acceptance before meeting their mentor now feel more accepted by their peers. This is my favorite. 93% of our littles believe they can and will graduate high school. 88% of our littles who did not believe they would attend or graduate college before meeting their big now believe they can and will. And then some of our littles, a lot of them actually struggle with grades and attendance. So out of those littles, 56% of them did better in school last year, and 56% of them improved their attendance. So Amanda wanted to share a couple of thoughts about her experiences as a big.
Sure. Yeah, I've been a big for a little more than a year now, and I love it. It gets both my little and I out in the community. We did a trash pickup one week, went to a llama show another week, which I really loved, and I'm a strong believer in adults learn just as much from kids as kids learn from adults. I learned that YOLO is no longer in the other day. So it's a great program, and really, I think, gets kids and adults out in the community in a really positive way. So, yeah.
We have 47 youth from Cedar Falls that are currently waiting and ready to be matched, so we're looking for mentors, especially big brothers, who have a few hours free each month, and we're celebrating the big day in July 12th, which now is Big Brothers, Big Sisters Day, at Single Speed. So if anyone's free and available for lunch from 12 to 1 at Single Speed in Waterloo, we'd love to have you part of the celebration. So thank you so much for your time. Thanks for your support, and we appreciate it.
Thanks to you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Moving on to item D. Are there any agenda revisions, Madam Clerk?
I have no agenda revisions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item E is new business consent calendar. The following items will be acted upon by a voice vote. On a single motion without separate discussion, unless someone from the council or the public requests an item to be polled for such requests, any such requests from the council. From the public? I'll now summarize the consent calendar. Item A is approve the following recommendations relative to the appointment of members to boards and commissions. That includes Michael Manchin, Board of Adjustment, Seth Chadwick and Glennis Worthington for the Library Board of Trustees. Thanks, as always, to these individuals for serving our great city. Item B is receive and file the committee of the whole minutes of June 18th relative to a few interviews, the Greater Cedar Valley Alliance update, review of the 2018 bond sale bids and bills and payroll. C is receive and file the city council work session minutes of July 11th. D is receive and file departmental monthly reports of May 2018. E is approve the application for a mobile merchant license, and F is approving various licenses. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion from council? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item two is a resolution calendar. These items will be acted upon by a roll-call vote with a single motion without separate discussion unless those from council or the public request an item to be polled. Any such requests from council? From the public? I'll now summarize the resolution calendar. Item A is resolution authorizing and providing for the issuance of $5.94 million in general obligation bonds. B through F are resolutions amending inter-fund loans from various funds to sewer enterprise funds. That's related to water reclamation projects. G is resolution levying a final assessment for costs incurred by the city to abate the nuisance on property located on Iowa Street. H is approving and authorizing execution of an easement agreement in conjunction with the Sidewalk Cafe on Main Street. I is a resolution approving and accepting two permanent utility easements in conjunction with the Highway 58 and Viking Road project. J is approving and accepting the contract and bond for the 2018 public sidewalk and pedestrian trail improvement project, and K is approving the transfer of property for private development. Is there a motion to approve the resolution calendar? So moved.
Second.
Moved and second. Any discussion from council? Requires a roll-call vote, please.
I'm voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item F, is there a motion to allow bills and payroll?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Requires a roll-call vote, please.
I'm voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item G, city council referrals. Does council have any items for referral this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Green.
I move to refer section 14.149 of the city code, which is the requirement for parking lots and parking areas to be hard-serviced, to committee of the whole for a discussion of amendment or repeal, and to suspend enforcement of the ordinance until city council makes a determination whether to amend or repeal it. I can repeat that. That's a lot.
If you don't mind, just so the city clerk can get that down.
So motion to refer section 14.149 to the committee of the whole for a discussion of amendment or repeal, and to suspend enforcement of the ordinance until city council makes a determination whether to amend or repeal it.
Thank you for that. There's a motion on the table for item referral. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second? Open up for discussion with council. Mr. Whelan?
I'll start the discussion off. This ordinance was put in place three years ago, and it was put in place to get rid of gravel parking lots on rental property, and the reason for that was numerous. The gravel was leaching into the streets, getting into our sewer system. The gravel lots were starting to expand, and so we passed an ordinance that says within three years after you have your land approval up for reapproval, you have to cement your parking lots for the people who are living in your residences. To date, 90% of those people who were given that notice have complied with this ordinance. My concern is the unintended consequences of bringing this back up for review. If we bring it back up for review, and as was said, that we decide to delete this requirement, we're all of a sudden liable for reimbursing the 90% of the landlords who have already upgraded and put in cement parking lots. My concern gets a little bit further. When we review a meeting we had on May 14th, where all councils heard from our attorneys in Des Moines on the conflict of interest question, their comment was, "The potential for conflict or the appearance of conflict ought to eliminate a council from participating in the issue." We have one council member who has seven units on college and state that have already complied with the cement parking lot, and yet he made a motion to bring this up for reconsideration. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You may ask further. Mr. DeBoer?
When we hit goal-setting, we discussed giving us documentation ahead of time so that we could review it in our packet as to what the referral was about. I didn't receive that. Was that not done? Was there something I'm missing from the packet?
No. Mr. Green indicated that he was going to bring it up for referral, I believe, late last week, and so just in terms of communicating with council throughout today, letting them be made aware the referral would be coming.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know if staff is prepared to discuss it, but I guess in the three years we've had this, they've done a nice job of summarizing it. I haven't really heard of a lot. Certainly, we've changed the rules on people, but it seems to me we gave individuals ample time to kind of plan for it. So I guess I'd kind of like to hear from staff what the impact has been, how has compliance been, are there significant issues worthy of a moratorium. I don't have a problem with the ongoing discussion about pros and cons, but I guess I'd kind of like to hear how things have transpired in the last three years.
Do you have an update for us, Stephanie, or?
Sure. Yeah, I can share a couple of points. I wanted to kind of go back to the rental ordinance's adoption. When we made a lot of those changes, that happened in February of 2015, and at that time, there was a lot of discussion about the paving part that was included in the ordinance that was passed, and discussion about how rentals are a commercial operation, talking about how commercial properties have had to pave back to about 1970 with the zoning ordinance at that time. And so it did pass as a part of the rental ordinance, and the implementation provision was that a rental would have to have that paving completed within three years after the next inspection. So for example, let's say a property had their inspection in March of 2015. So the ordinance was adopted in February, their inspection was in March. Well, then, three years from that date, they would need to have gravel removed and hard surface in place. And so what we did then, the city had a variety of ways that we notified property owners about that regulation. We, the rental inspection made a notification when he was out doing the inspection. So for example, that March example, that was included as a note in the rental inspection, and the landlord signs acknowledgement of the rental inspection and understands that the paving is due. We then had several currents articles about paving and the application to rentals. We also are doing a postcard mailing, one year in advance, of that coming due for a property. We started that then about a year or two ago, as deadlines were starting to approach here, starting in 2018. And so a one-year mailing, a postcard, and then one month before the rental inspection, we are doing a drive-by to see if it's paved, and then sending a notice to any of those that are not paved that, hey, you've got a month. We'd really like to be talking with you. Do you have a plan? Come in and talk with us, that kind of thing. Because what we've talked about is typical to any code enforcement issue. We would handle this the same way, where we're asking the property owner to give us a plan. If you're concerned that you have too much to do, and economically that's not going to work for you, well, first of all, let's talk about the extent of what you do need to do. Maybe you're imagining that it's more than you need. Let's talk about how we could maybe do that in phases, and let's have a realistic plan, and we'll move forward with that and work with property owners. So we did then have an inquiry from the Omni Budsmen about our approach, our process of adopting, as well as implementing the ordinance. That happened probably about nine months ago or so, and we described that, and the comment that we received back from that Omni Budsmen was that we've really gone above and beyond in terms of that notification. We're seeing about 70%, 80% compliance at this point when we go out and do those inspections, and then beyond that, then we have several properties where we have plans in place, that we've talked with those property owners, and are expecting that they will achieve what they've indicated to us in writing. So that's a little bit of an overview of where we're at.
Any further discussion for what Stephanie?
Mr. Mayor, I brought this up because it's not that I'm looking to make a decision tonight, and I knew that this, these kinds of questions aren't something that can be answered in one night in one session. So I'm requesting that it be referred to the committee of the whole, so we can have a dialogue about it, which I believe just didn't happen significantly the first time around. This was part of a much larger omnibus rental ordinance change. I've watched all the council videos for those sessions. I've read the minutes and looked at the committee of the whole sessions that related to it, read the task force report, and I just haven't seen that the section for requiring parking lots and parking areas to have been conducted in the public light. Perhaps there were additional sessions or discussions that occurred, but it wasn't something that came forward before city council, as far as I could tell. Correct me if I'm wrong. So I believe that discussion should have happened three years ago. Now that I've been studying the issues, this is the earliest opportunity I have to bring it forward for us to discuss tonight. My concerns with it, to Councilor Whelan's point, for 90%, which I'm not, I haven't seen that figure myself, but even if 90%, even if 95% of properties have complied with this requirement, that doesn't change the fact that it's an unfair law. So if there are, if there's openness to us, or it opens for claims or issues, I don't think that that should be a reason for us not to fix what I believe is wrong. So I believe it's an unfair law, because it's crafted as a housing code that selectively targets rental property owners, and it seems that the code is used to carry out the enforcement of another section of zoning ordinance, 29.114G, which is the ordinance requiring all residential properties to be hardscaped. Also, if we look at the rental housing, the minimum rental housing code, the purpose of it is to safeguard, as per the writing of it, it's to safeguard life or limb, property, health, and public welfare. And I just don't see that this requirement to pave meets that standard, and I feel like we should be following that, because if you look at the rest of section 14, it deals with things like pest control, other safety items, fire extinguishers, things that affect the health of the residents. If city staff can tell me how the gravel, the changing of gravel to rental or to paving affects the health and safety, then that would be a different consideration entirely, and I would like to have that discussion. But I didn't want to have it in closed doors with city staff. I wanted to have it out in the open, so that we could all get around it and make a decision as council whether this is fair or not. And I'm not saying even that I would vote to change the ordinance, but I absolutely believe it's important that we discuss it.
And I believe that's why we're here, what we are discussing. This is the referral process, whether council wants staff to spend the time and effort to take a look at it. Was there something, Mr. Miller?
Yeah. I'm going to disagree on a couple of fronts. This was a very controversial ordinance to put in place. It was discussed openly numerous, numerous occasions. I don't know the specifics of this particular portion of it, but there were, it was a very controversial, very tough decision. I think the context of the neighborhood was part of the conversation at that time, because prior to that, we had, as a community, only looked at health and safety, and we made a change there to look at the neighborhood as a whole versus just health and safety impacts. I'm not opposed to a conversation about it, but in no way do I want to see a moratorium put in place at this point. So that's where I'm at with it.
Mr. Whelan?
I have not checked the record in the past meetings we had, but I've never seen council operate in a vacuum without involving the people. We always have a public hearing, and I'm sure we did with this one. We always have three readings. So Mr. Green's comment that public didn't have an opportunity to speak, I think is just plain false. We always, always, since I've been on council, have had a public hearing and three readings of controversial issues, and I'm sure that's what happened here. But I'll check it out and make sure.
I think that's aside from, sorry.
Frank, did you have something?
Well, I could maybe answer that for you, because Daryl and I attended
All of them?
20 meetings, probably, on this and other related issues related to this particular ordinance. And so as far as it not being done in a public format, that it was. Okay? I was there. Stephanie was there, and Daryl was there. He didn't always agree with everything that we did, but I believe there was adequate public discussion. And I'm like Mark. I don't have a problem with taking a step back and looking at, how's it working? Is it what we need to do? But to take the step of a moratorium, I think, is excessive at this point, having an ongoing discussion about it. And we can always tweak things. But, so anyway, I appreciate you bringing it up, but having gone through the slings and arrows of that committee, it was very public.
Right.
Could I?
I just want to respond to that.
I was just, okay.
If I could.
Go ahead.
So this was passed as ordinance 2836 back February 15th, 2015, 16, 2015. And there was, perhaps I misspoke. It's not that we didn't have discussion about the entire ordinance, but to consider that rental housing code had sweeping changes for dealing with lots of different aspects of the code. In my sense, and there was a lot of discussion, very controversial, I appreciate that, and I don't even disagree with the other components of that ordinance. It's simply this one part of the requirement to hardscape. I don't believe that that part came up, because there were so many other concerns from landlords, from residents, related to whether it should pass or fail. That's my personal opinion, but I felt like it kind of came in under the radar of everything else that was a major concern. So if this was, I would just like this ordinance to have an opportunity for the light of day, as late as it is, to be discussed on its own, and not to have a moratorium against any other provisions of the rental housing code, but just to say that we, as a city, agree that we will not punish rental property owners who haven't complied yet. Once we deal with it, once, if the council does take another vote to say, or even to not act at all, on whether they want to revisit this, then continue enforcement, but at least to have the opportunity to present the various sides of this.
Mr. Cruz?
Some of the points I'd like to make on this, I think it's a misrepresentation to say that rentals are commercial. They are not property taxed as commercial. There's nothing that shows them as a commercial entity. You get the rollback on your property tax, so that point, I don't think, is valid. And if you go back to the 1970 code, the first reference to parking lots, other than residential, shall be dust-free surfaces, is brought up. They specifically eliminate residential use, which, to me, qualifies the rental properties unless they're a triplexer greater, which was the old definition of commercial use for residential. That has been changed here a number of years ago with property tax revisions. You also have section 29.112, non-conforming uses in the Cedar Falls Code of Ordinances. That points out that existing conditions at the time of enactment of a code can continue as existing, and we've basically taken that away with this ordinance here, and as everybody has said, we should revisit this and continue with a review at committee of the whole.
Anything further from council? Staff, anything further as far as communications?
I just want to make sure I understand the request for referral. So the referral is to the committee of the whole to consider amendment or repeal, but also to discuss suspension of enforcement, because the council may not act tonight.
Correct.
Or a moratorium. I just want to make that clear. Everyone understands what the vote's going to be.
Yeah, I can make adjustments.
Mr. Miller, did you have something else?
Trying to put it in words, I guess for myself, back then, when we voted on that, I did look at, I do look at rentals as their business decision. I think most landlords are taking the tax write-offs that are associated with the business in regards to having a rental, and what we were seeing back then was minimum standards being met, not anything above and beyond that. So it was because, and largely, you can put the blame wherever that goes, because we, as a city, said, we're going to pay attention to health and safety only, and we needed to make a modification to that for our neighborhoods. So I feel like, back then, all of this was discussed, and there was a lot of disagreement about it. To Stephanie's credit, or staff's credit, and how far they have gone to allow landlords the time to make the adjustments, I mean, some landlords could get potentially six years to make that change, and to plan for that, as far as the hardscaping requirement goes. Some only had three years, and I understand that isn't, you know, we're not getting, nobody's getting rich off landlord or off of one property, per se, but in all fairness to everybody else in the neighborhood, it fit within the criteria for me. So like I said, I'm not opposed to the discussion. I think moratorium's a little far, but understanding that that can't happen tonight, so be it.
I'd like to point out, from my remembering the discussions that took place, there were some comments about gravel erosion on rental properties. I see owner-occupied homes with gravel driveways would have the same potential for gravel erosion, the same way anybody else does. The number of cars per household is greater on owner-occupied homes. There's a lot of statistics that weren't openly discussed. One item was said that the EPA says gravel is a pollutant. If that would be the case, all the farm-to-market roads would be labeled a hazard, and it's not. You wouldn't put gravel on the shoulders of your road. So gravel doesn't wash into our, if gravel washes into our sewer lines, then an owner-occupied home or a business that still has gravel parking lots would be contributing to our pollution problem. Further, paving and having more hard surfaces increases stormwater runoff. We have greater volumes of water going through our storm sewers, creating problems with erosion of streams and rivers. So I could go on and on, and there's a lot of reasons and a lot of components of this that we haven't discussed thoroughly to look at the proper future of this ordinance and how it's applied. I urge that we allow this to continue.
Thanks.
If I may, and Mr. Cruz, conflict of interest point that Mr. Whelan was making, I assume that was directed at you.
I don't have property on State Street, so I'm assuming, though, but I'll point out to that fact that
Excuse me. It's College Street and 28th.
I was told by in-house counsel and two legal counsels outside of the city domain that if we talk about that if we talk about something that's related to a rental, as long as it is citywide, then it's not a specific component just to me that I'm promoting my own personal agenda. So I'm cleared, it's no different than somebody that's a farmer, that's working as a lobbyist for farm ideas and conditions. They're knowledgeable about the topic and can present that topic and have a point and counterpoint on it.
Mr. Whelan?
Just a quick comment in regards to that. I accept your understanding. It's the appearance of conflict as perceived by the people you represent. So you can get all the legal information you want, but if your constituency thinks it's an appearance of it, that you tend to benefit from it, that's where the issue comes with our attorneys.
My constituents were happy to see that I was running for election, and they wanted me to represent fairly the landlord issues. So I don't have a problem with it, and I feel comfortable going forward that I don't have a conflict of interest, as long as it's not specific to my properties.
I think we're good leaving at that. Mr. Green?
I just want to say, for the record, I don't have any rental properties. I've never been a rental property owner, so this is as a, just as a regular concerned resident, just looking to ensure that our ordinances are fair. And to Councilor Cruz's point, for the, my, probably my biggest concern on this is the parity between rental properties and homeowner-owned properties, where they can be side by side and will say that a rental property is a concern, it must be paved. The homeowner doesn't have to be paved, and it's just this arbitrary distinction between the two, in my view. I question whether or not this law, this ordinance is in place because we can, because we have the ability to use the rental permit as a stick to enforce compliance, where we can't do that with homeowners. If there is a concern with debris, with runoff because of gravel, I've seen it myself after this last heavy rainstorm, I went up an alley just to look at something else, and I saw gravel pushed down into the street. It was all city gravel from the alleys, so I can appreciate why we're hardscaping that area. But if there's a concern, a valid concern, with gravel runoff and with the dangers or the unsidelness or whatever, my view is it should be a nuisance ordinance that should apply to all Cedar Falls properties, not just to a targeted select few, because we can.
Mr. Whelan?
I'll respond one more time. Back when we were looking at this, we went out, looked at rental properties, and we looked at homeowners that had gravel. There's a huge difference between a rental property and a property owned by somebody who owns the property. They take care of their gravel, it doesn't creep, they keep it up, and it doesn't spread. By comparison, you can tell which homes are rental and which homes are owner-occupied simply by looking at the condition of their yard and their gravel. So there is a difference, and that's why we looked at the commercial in a different light than we looked at residential. By the way, all residential homes must have concrete driveways now, so.
Only new.
New residential.
Only new residential.
I'll, sir, I'll do respect with my colleague from At-Large. I strongly disagree with that statement, that rental properties, there are cases where I have looked, this isn't something I'm bringing up overnight, I've looked at this over two months and looked at different properties. I can't tell, in many cases, what the difference is. If there are problems with the gravel, it can be addressed separately. If there's a certain standard, as we're saying that, you can tell the difference between a homeowner-owned property and a rental-owned property. If there are some standards that we can set for how that gravel should look, then let's set those standards and enforce those, not to arbitrarily say, well, even if yours is a well-maintained gravel lot, rental property owner, you need to pave because we can, we can enforce this. That's my view.
I appreciate the respectful and lively debate, and this, again, is part of our process for referral, to then move forward more formally to a committee meeting and have staff spend the time to bring things forward according to what the motion's been made. So there is a motion on the table in a second. I will ask, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
I'm sorry, those for aye, would you please? There is four ayes. That motion does pass to move this motion to committee. Thanks again for the good, respectful debate.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I ask that in the future? We do follow the, what we had set out in goal-setting and give us the courtesy of written communication on this in advance, since that's what we agreed to?
Yes.
It would have been nice to know that this was going to be a discussion tonight, but I unfortunately was not apprised of it, so.
I would agree, and yes, I'll make that commitment.
I got a question referring to that, if I may. To what extent would we, as a councilperson bringing forward a referral, have to have detailed information presented to everybody, or do we just need the point to say, Susan, we're talking about gravel? Or what level do the, because it appears that staff was very well-prepared for this referral here with a lot of information, more so than us even. So that sort of defeats the purpose if we're going to have staff to coin, to use the word, beat down a referral before it's given the chance to have light of day. If we just want to be notified that we have something coming, or to what extent should a referral be vetted and information in front of us? Because my idea or perception as a new councilperson is that the referral is just the initial initiation. One of the first ones I was involved with was the deer harvesting. A lot of, a lot more information goes into that to determine, is it worthy to go forward? Initially, I would have said, there's no point, we're in a farming community and so on. But I guess I'm asking, how much information does council want? What did we decide in the goal-setting? You know, what, Susan, what would you like to see? To what extent just feel that it's okay to go forward with something on a referral?
I just wanted what we agreed to at goal-setting to be the standard that we actually do, since we all agreed at it.
I think if I can, if I can speak, that at the goal-setting, and staff, correct me if I'm wrong, because that would have been written down and noted in the goal-setting, was to let council know, in this instance, of something to go to referral. To the extent of the information you put in there is the extent you want to state your case. But I think timing, maybe in part to Mr. Brewer's point, the timing of knowing it was last Thursday or last Friday that it was given, I think would have shed a lot more light into those that didn't know about it in discussion. I see you have plenty of notes as well, so you knew about it, Mr. Cruz. And I know Mr. Brewer earlier today didn't know about it. So this, the continuity of having it in the packet, I think is what council did agree on. The content from which you put inside there is up to the councilperson bringing the referral forward.
I think part of the discussion, too, was about when we discussed uses, usage of staff time, and that once something passes as a referral, we're dedicating staff resources to it, so giving us all an opportunity to say, is this something we want to be cognizant of before we push it on to staff?
Well, staff put in a fair bit of time here, the way it looks and appears to me.
I don't think it was considerable, but.
I asked staff a question, and she happened to be in on that committee for a long time. I don't think a lot of work was put in on it.
Well, I don't know, staff find a lot, I guess, you know, half hour, hour, 15 minutes? I don't know.
And just as the person who brought forward the referral, I'll note, I didn't intend to sideline or sideswipe anyone on this. I did send an email to the mayor on July 5th, last Thursday morning, letting him know that I planned on sending to Committee of the Whole. I had let him know previously, too, verbally, that I was planning to make this referral, and he had asked me if I had let fellow council members know, and I told him that for referrals, I just plan on sending them to you and leave them to your discretion on what to put in the mayor's update. I'm thinking the presiding officer, as the presiding officer, we on council should defer to you on how to best approach that. So I would have provided additional information for the packet if I thought that that was something I was supposed to provide. I honestly didn't expect we'd have this detailed discussion tonight, moving forward. It was just for the referral, and I thought much of this information would come out in the next session, because I didn't expect staff to be prepared with answers for it. And originally, I had planned to, or requested to bring it forward as an agenda item, and was recommended that I take that just to referral first because of the amount of information that was going to be needed for it. And I didn't want to bring it up with the staff myself because of that council time involved for just one person. So I'm grateful for the discussions that we've had on this, whether it had passed or not. This is how the process is supposed to work, so thank you.
You bet.
Could I just ask a quick clarifying question? It seems, in my short time now on council, that this was a pretty lengthy discussion for a referral, or is this typical? Because to me, a referral is a slight interest in a topic that should be reviewed, and great leniency should be given towards that councilperson bringing it forward, and it seemed there was more resistance to the referral here.
This does seem to be unique, even in my relatively short tenure, but I think the matter at hand of something that passed three years ago and moved forward accordingly to all the discussion that we had, this is a little bit more unique than the normal referral. That does normally give a little bit more leniency, but to Mr. Brewer's point, there needs to be a trigger or a gauge for council to take a look at that because it does amount to time and effort from staff.
I guess I would disagree with Mr. Cruz just slightly in that, yes, there's some latitude with it, but it is saying that this is something we want to take governmental action on, so it's not just a, I guess, a fact-finding, for lack of a better term. In my view, it's a, we're saying we want to, we want to spend council and staff time on this.
Well, I think the controversial nature of this probably sparked a little bit of the conversation here, too, because this wasn't just overnight, we're going to do this. This was a topic for a while, so I think that all plays into it. Now, to the referral question, Mr. Mayor, you still have veto authority, I guess, to put something on the agenda or not, so doesn't that throw a loop in the notification for a referral?
I believe for referrals, that's not a part of the veto authority the chair has. I believe it needs to be a council item, as I understand it, but I'm going to refer to our legal counsel.
Agreed.
Agreed.
So, say that again?
Only on, only on formal agenda items is the authority of the chair to be able to veto, not on referrals or not on action taken at a committee.
Okay, but if that, to Sue's point, if we're all going to get notification ahead of time because somebody wants to bring a referral forward, and it's not going to get put on the agenda, how is that process going to happen?
Like it does now, I guess.
Do you understand my point?
We got to do that?
Well, you mean in terms of, if, in this instance?
If you're notified ahead of time that somebody wants to bring a referral forward, you don't think it should be on an agenda item, per se? What is, how does this work?
Yeah, like it is now, wouldn't it?
It is as it is now, yeah. The chair that cannot stop at this juncture in the agenda.
My point is, though, for, for what we decided in goal-setting, if somebody's going to bring a referral forward and we get notification ahead of time, how is that going to look in the future? Because that didn't happen here.
I'll put it to you this way, the chair, as I understand it, cannot stop a councilperson, the decision-making body
Absolutely.
At a meeting from bringing a referral up at any time.
Sure.
It's just a gentleman and a lady's agreement, if it's at goal-setting, that we do it a certain way for all council to book things over and have it over the weekend. So I guess if you're asking if this comes around again the same way.
There's still a variable that
I think we have.
Anybody can make a referral during a council meeting at this juncture.
That's right.
Okay.
Exactly right.
Yes.
I think there hasn't been definitive procedures for this new thought of having.
Well, it's very new. I mean, we just did it the last goal-setting, I think.
I know, that's what I'm saying, because we got the point across, we got our discussion, and we're having a referral, so I guess it accomplished it. But Susan's vote no was on the procedure, I perceive, not so much the topic.
Actually, it's both, because I wasn't given the same opportunity as you were to do research on what happened three years ago, and so that would be the procedure part of it. And I disagree that I wasn't given that same opportunity because I wasn't given any kind of an email or something in the packet to let me know that this was going to be discussed tonight. And then my second part of the no would be, I agree with Mark. We discussed this three years ago, it was very controversial, we came up with an ordinance. A lot of people have upheld and done their renovations based on our ordinance, and now we're going to turn around and tell, change it? I just, I don't agree with that.
Just for the record, I was not aware of it until yesterday that this was coming forward.
And just for the record, Thursday, Thursday the 5th, I had no access to email until this weekend, and my family time doubled up the fact that I didn't send an email update out.
I guess.
Our process is not perfect.
I understand that, but I guess I perceive that the referral should have wide latitude to move forward topics that would have maybe minimal interest at the point they brought up, but then give the opportunity for the public to view and hear more and add input.
Yes, I'll throw one more comment out. Many of the referrals that we have would better be served as a goal-setting topic, so we build them into the items that we want staff to work on. This is going to take a lot of time, and it's going to take staff away from the goals that we all agreed to work on in our October goal-setting meeting. So maybe these, we're getting, maybe these we should defer until we get to goal-setting. I'm not saying in this case, but a lot of items could wait until goal-setting, there's no urgency to them. And this defeats goal-setting by setting staff off in another direction that they hadn't planned their work for.
Very good.
I would be fine deferring goals that we have for the future if it's, in place of that, we're doing things that involve what perceive as justice. It's always going to come forward.
Very good.
Also, one last question for Committee of the Whole. Is there a standard time that we'd look, maybe two weeks, three weeks? When can we expect to be debating this?
Are we going to get the other things that are already on?
Well, and that's, based on the motion, it's off to referrals, so we'll have to defer to staff to see what can or cannot be pushed back based on the amount of time projected or forecasted that this might take.
And that's my concern for still enforcing the provisions of it. It may be a moot point, it could sit in committee, just like North Cedar items, for years.
Well, I'm sure you won't sit there for years, but to give you a definitive date right now, I can't do that. Moving on to Item H, does council have any updates? I was going to ask Director Olson, if, since the 4th of July was a few days ago, do you have some high-level? I know there's a Courier article about it and things like that, on how the firework calls came in and how that went.
Yeah, certainly, I got some statistics here I can share with you. This year, between June 1st and July 4th, the police division received 120 calls with complaints of fireworks. Now, as everybody recalls, fireworks were banned in the city of Cedar Falls for this year, so any use of fireworks within the city was illegal. However, you can purchase, and that's a state law that allows the sales and purchasing of it, you just can't use it. But I think of the 120 calls, it's interesting, I think, at least for me it was, that in June, 26 of those 120 calls came in in June. On July 3rd and 4th, 83 of those 120 calls came in. In fact, 50 of those calls came in between 8:30 and 10:30 PM on July 4th. So the closer we get to the 4th, the larger percentage of those calls that came in. In comparison to last year, 2017, now in 2017, fireworks were legal in the city of Cedar Falls. We had a total of 114 calls between June 1 and July 4th. 54 in June, and the remainder of them were the 1st through the 4th, with the highest number being 21 on the 3rd. Now, some of those, people were calling in and complaining when it was actually legal, but a majority of those came in after 10 o'clock because the law said until 10 o'clock at night. So a majority of those calls came probably between 10 and 10:30. The good news, I think, here is that we didn't have any injuries or fires reported in Cedar Falls as a result of fireworks. And just quickly, I guess there's a couple other cities that I think, City of Waterloo, fireworks were banned, they had 94 calls just on July 3rd and 4th alone. The city of Des Moines, and this, this I got out of the Register, so if anyone's interested, the Register has an article kind of outlining some other calls that the Des Moines area cities had, but the city of Des Moines had over 500 calls on July 4th alone, pretty significant number. Urbandale about 61, West Des Moines 63.
And they had banned fireworks down there?
Yes, they did.
Those communities.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, thank you.
Mr. Olson, of those call, the 53 you said on July 4th for this year?
64.
64, excuse me. How many of those were we able to respond to?
Well, 64 came in on the 4th, 50 of those came between 8:30 and 10:30. With that high a number, we weren't able to go to all the calls in a timely manner. Some of them would have been responded to an hour or two later. We were able to make contact at, with We were able to make contact with 19, I think, of 50 of those. And when I say contact, contact with a home or a resident or somebody who may or may not have been responsible for the fireworks. But the other ones, they just, they just weren't able to. So when you have a call volume that high, you know, and there's other calls that would have came in in the same time period that, you know, would have.
Priority calls, accidents, injuries, that sort of thing.
Yeah.
Very good. Thanks for that. Appreciate it. One last update I'd like to ask for, I was a bit remiss. Last time, council may have noticed, our new UNI student liaison to the city council, Jacob Madden, was here. I didn't ask him at the time to prepare just a brief introduction, but I'd asked him just to spend a minute and introduce himself to ourselves, staff, and the public.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to the council for the opportunity to be here and to speak. My name is Jacob Madden. I'm an incoming senior at UNI. I'm serving as the city council liaison from the Northern Iowa Student Government to the city council here for the upcoming academic year. It is a privilege to sit with my fellow residents of Cedar Falls and be able to better the city for everyone who lives here. I do live just over on Fourth Street, a few blocks away, so y'all can come knock on my door if you ever need to find me late at night and tell me about something. I'm from Polk City. It's a town northwest of Des Moines, near Sailorville Lake, if any of you are avid fans of boating. At UNI, I've worked as a reporter and an editor with the student newspaper, The Northern Iowan, where I discovered a passion for public policy and informing the community. Now, I'm a political communications major and a French minor, and I hope to spend my time with the council and the community, working to better the relationship between UNI and its students, and Cedar Falls and the Cedar Valley at large. If you're ever interested in talking with me or bringing any comments or questions to my attention, feel free to attend a city council meeting, and I'd be happy to speak with you at any point. I would like to conclude by extending my gratitude to the students of UNI, the council, and the mayor for the opportunity to be of service this year to the city of Cedar Falls.
Thank you, Jacob. Any further updates from council? Moving on to Item I, is public forum. Speakers will have one opportunity to speak for up to five minutes on topics germane to city business. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak tonight? Hearing and seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.